Good evening. Hello. Today is Thursday, January the 12th, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those here present in the audience today, as well as those watching online. Director Alt, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, um, tonight we will start off with our annual organization for the Board of Education. But before we do that, we have our oath of office for our newly elected or reelected school board members. We have Scott Hume, Abigail Alt, Safio Mursal, and myself. We're elected on November 8th, 2022, to a four-year term beginning on the first Monday of January 2023. They have all completed the necessary paperwork as required by law, including the acceptance of office and the oath of office. Director Werb, Board Treasurer, in 2022, will be leading the board members elected in 2022 in the oath of office.
It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the role of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together and with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by repeating the oath of office after me?
Director Scott Hume, Director Alt, Chair Chester, and Director Safio Mursal, will you please stand? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member.
That I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member.
Of Independent School District Number 191.
Of Independent School District 191.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. You may be seated. I will now turn the meeting back over to Chair Chester. Thank you, Director Werb. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Director Werb. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next order of business is the annual organization of the Board of Education. There are thirteen items to this section of the agenda. We will start by filling the four board officer positions. Nominations do not require a second. The board chair will ask for nominations three times before closing the nominations. Board members will need to vote only if there is more than one nomination for the position. So, okay, so we don't have to do aye or, okay, cool. For Board Chair, the chair presides at all school board meetings and works with the superintendent on calling board meetings and establishing meeting agendas. At times, the chair is called upon to serve in ceremonial capacity as the ranking elected representative of the school district. The chair countersigns all checks drawn by the treasurer. Are there any nominations for the Office of Chair? I would like to nominate Scott Hume. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations for Board Chair are now closed. Director Hume is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Chair. I hereby declare Director Scott Hume elected as Chair by acclamation and directing the Act being clerked to record it in the minutes. Chair Hume.
Congratulations.
We're switching spots.
Can't switch fast enough.
I know.
Your name plates.
Oh, I'll do that. You go, you start.
All right. Thank you, colleagues. And special thanks to Leslie Chester for her leadership and service to our board and our community in 2022, including switching our name plates. Now I will turn to the election of Vice Chair. The school board created the Vice Chair position in 1989 for the purpose of easing the workload of the Chair. The Vice Chair serves as Chair when the Chair is absent, assists with board operations and plans the annual evaluation of the superintendent. Are there any nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? I would like to nominate Anna Werb for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations for Vice Chair are now closed. Director Werb is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Vice Chair. I hereby declare Director Werb elected Vice Chair by acclamation. Congratulations. The clerk presides at board meetings in the absence of the Chair and Vice Chair and from a legal standpoint, is responsible for board minutes, signing board-approved contracts, and calling school board elections. The clerk also countersigns all district checks. The routine duties of the clerk are performed by the superintendent's office and the business office. Are there any nominations for Office of Clerk?
Chair Hume, I would like to nominate Director Leslie Chester as clerk.
Leslie Chester has been nominated for clerk. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations for clerk are now closed. Director Chester is the only candidate nominated for Office of Clerk. I hereby declare Director Chester elected clerk by acclamation. Congratulations. The treasurer is legally responsible for the deposit and withdrawal of all district funds and reporting the same to the school board. Checks drawn on school district accounts are signed by the treasurer. The routine duties of the treasurer are performed by the business office. Are there any nominations for the Office of Treasurer?
Chair Hume, I would like to nominate Director Eric Miller in absentia for treasurer.
Director Eric Miller has been nominated for treasurer. Are there any other nominations?
Chair Hume, I would like to nominate Abigail Alt for treasurer.
Okay, um, so I guess we'll have a vote. We have two candidates. We have Directors Miller and Alt. Do we do one vote at a time, or do we?
Do you need a second?
Yeah.
You don't need a second.
Do you want to be, do you accept that nomination?
As treasurer?
Treasurer.
Treasurer.
You don't want to. So if you don't.
I appreciate the nomination.
So Director Alt, I believe, is.
I'm declining the nomination.
Well, in that case, Director Miller is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Treasurer. And so I hereby declare Director Miller elected treasurer by acclamation. The next agenda item is the salaries of board members. Salaries of school board members are set annually. In January 2016, the salaries were set at $550 per month for each director plus an additional monthly stipend of $50 for the Chair in recognition of increased duties and expenses associated with that position. On March 14th, 2019, the salaries were reduced by $100 per month, beginning July 1st, 2019. The recommendation at this time is that salaries of board members be set at $450 per month and that the chairperson receives an additional $50 per month in 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Is there any discussion? Director Connor?
Uh, yes, Director, I mean Chairperson Alt Hume. I would like to propose that the stipend for the school board be increased back to the original $550 per month as it was before I took office in 2019. Due to the increase across the board for all the other positions, teachers, custodians, superintendent, everyone else. Now that we're in post, post, I can't even say it.
Pandemic.
Thank you. Post pandemic, I just feel that that had something to do with us, with you deciding to take that decrease. And I would like to make a motion or proposal to increase it back.
So is that a revised motion, right? An amendment to the motion?
Amendment to the motion.
So we would need to have, is there a, so the motion I believe you're suggesting is that you amend $450 to $500. Is your, $550, sorry.
As opposed to the.
Is there a second for Director Connor's motion?
For the sake of conversation, I'll second.
Okay, Director Alt seconds. Is there any discussion? Okay. Oh, Director Alt?
So, um, I do appreciate Director Connor's reasoning behind wanting to amend this and increase stipends. And I just want to provide some perspective. So back in 2015, stipends were 500. As was noted earlier in 2016, those were increased to 550. I voted against this increase because my heart felt then, as it does now, that education funding is not for volunteers or elected officials. It really belongs with our students. Second to that, and I remember, you know, conversations from last year, we were talking about equity and hurdles and I thought about that. And this board makes decisions based on data as best we can, right? Staff brings forward information for us to consider. And this is, of course, something that staff would not have a recommendation for. We have to kind of discern this on our own. So my perspective and experience has been, for years now, ever since I was on the board, I have had conversations with engaged parents and community members. And with the goal of engaging them to run for school board, especially to diversify our board and make sure that we're representing the students that are in our seats and the families that live in our homes. All of those conversations that I had were really rich. And the families, the parents that I spoke with, asked very thoughtful questions. They wanted to know about the work. They wanted to know about the time commitment. Not one of them asked about the stipend. So, and of all the people that I spoke with who chose not to run, their reason for not running was for some reason other than financial. It was, you know, time away from family, work-life balance. Maybe it just didn't feel like a good fit for them at the time. So in terms of considering why people maybe aren't running for school board, then I thought about the last couple of years, right? And we know that school boards have increasingly been in the news and in very challenging positions. And again, with other conversations that I've had with community members, they've shared their belief that school board member is probably one of the most challenging elected roles because we're caring for our community's children. And it's a heavy lift. We all know that. And Safio, welcome, and we're looking forward to working with you. And however we can help you, for sure we will. So I just offer that up for fellow board members' consideration that I really, I question whether people running for school board or choosing not to run for school board are really doing it for financial reasons versus understanding the true nature of our role. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I guess I'd just like to add one, mainly for the very reasons that she mentioned, the community, why people don't want to be, run for school board. Where it's so hard to find candidates and also especially people of color because of the time commitment. And we all know that it is a big time commitment. I mean, I've learned that now in my third year. And when I took this position, I definitely did not have money on my mind either because that's not what we're here for. I mean, this is not a salaried position. We do it because of the passion of the children. But it still would be nice to be compensated for my time by what I thought I would be getting before I got on the board. I'm not asking for an increase. I'm not asking for a raise. I think we all just deserve what we had in the past. That's all. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I just want to say I concur with Director Alt. When I was running for school board, I didn't even know there was a stipend. I just purely did it because I was passionate about the, you know, platform I had. It was a surprise to me that I even got money. I just was like, you know, and I've heard different things. I've heard some school board members get paid, some school board members don't. So, um, to me, it's like, you know, I'm happy just getting what I get. That's how I feel.
Thank you.
Can I add something, please?
Yeah, I too was surprised that we actually got a stipend. I didn't run, I mean, I work in the nonprofit sector, so our board members don't get paid at all. So I was under that assumption. But the reason that the board went to 450 was a motion that I had made in 2019 because we were facing a huge financial challenge in this district in which we had to cut millions of dollars out of the budget. And I made forward the request to reduce our stipend because we are leaders. And I wanted to set an example by having the district having to experience cuts. This board was going to experience it as too. Realizing that was four years ago now and things have changed, I am not opposed to the idea. But I'm also one who's a little hesitant that we haven't exactly shifted too far away from financial challenges. So I'm kind of on the fence.
Thank you. I don't have anything to add. I think all of you, all four of you have made very good points. So if there are no further comments, I think we need to vote on the amendment. Yes. So all in favor of the amendment to raise the board's stipend to $550 a month, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The nays have it. So now I believe we have to go back and vote on the original motion, which was that the board's stipend would be set at $450 per month and that the chairperson would receive an additional $50 per month. So we already had a motion. It was already seconded. So was there any discussion about, any additional discussion about that? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is regular meetings of the board. Regular meetings of the school board are typically held on the second and fourth Thursday of each month. However, board meetings may be scheduled during other weeks to accommodate scheduling needs. Regular school board meetings will be held at Diamond Head Education Center, 200 West Burnsville Parkway in Burnsville. The recommendation is that all regular meetings of the Independent School District 191 Board of Education would commence at 6:30 PM on the dates noted below with meetings conducted at the Diamond Head Education Center and Cablecast. Board listening sessions will be scheduled from 5:45 to 6:15 PM before regular meetings. The meeting schedule, the upcoming meeting schedule would be January 12th, 2023, January 26th, 2023. I was going to say 2023 without having to read through all of them. Just assume they're all 2023. February 9th, February 23rd, March 9th, March 23rd, April 13th, April 27th, May 11th, May 25th, June 8th, June 22nd, August 10th, August 24th, September 14th, September 28th, October 12th, October 26th, November 9th, December 14th, and then January 11th of 2024. These are all presumably tentative because I think we'll revote on them at the next year's organizational meeting. But currently, January 11th of 2024, January 25th, February 8th, February 22nd, March 14th, March 28th, April 18th, April 25th, May the 9th, May 23rd, June 13th, and June 20th of 2024. Do I have a motion to approve that meeting schedule?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded, I believe that was Director Alt. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The next few items pertain to the calendar year of 2023. They are of a routine nature, and although board action is required, discussion is usually unnecessary. I recommend approval of all resolutions as a single consent agenda. In the event a board member wishes to discuss any item, it should be removed from the list so that it may receive individual attention. Please note that our committee meetings will be approved at our board meeting on January 26th. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items G through M?
So moved. Go ahead.
So moved by Director Werb.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right. We will now move to the information portion of our meeting. The first report is from Student Representative Ava Drobnik. Welcome, Ava.
Good evening, everybody. So I'll start off with just our student groups for tonight. So Student Council, they're still working at Snow Week. We actually just had a meeting earlier this week where we just gathered in our committees for the various Snow Week groups that we have and then just assessed what still needs to be done for the upcoming dance at the end of the month, as well as the activities that'll go with that week. And then for Burnsville Strong, honestly, not up to much right now. They're going to pick it up in a few weeks. But I did see that the Mental Health Committee, which is actually new this year, Ms. Waller runs that. And there's an additional, students could choose to be on that committee and other ones. And they just have had posters up about mental health and like what it looks like maybe to need help or how you could get help if needed, which is always good to see, like in the bathrooms and the hallways, just scattered around. And then BSU has actually been really busy lately. And today, they were coordinating an event for their members to watch the new Black Panther movie. And they actually left today during the third hour and enjoyed the rest of the day watching the movie. So not only was this fun for BSU, but they actually raised over $2,000 doing this because, so out of 150 moviegoers, each of those kids paid $15, which will go to an accrued fund for BSU. And they also have some extra money in there left over from other things. So they're at about $3,000, which is awesome because a lot of that's going to go towards, according to Seeham, who's the president of the BSU, it's going to go towards like graduation cords so that people can be recognized for their participation in BSU. And then also a senior party for them. And then activities promoting like Black Excellence, which will be primarily happening during February or Black History Month. And then also T-shirts for the BSU members. And the cool thing about that is that they're going to go and buy through a local black business owner. So they're keeping that money in the community and getting it to anybody and just keeping it cycling through the Burnsville community, which is awesome. And then similar groups to BSU, they're kind of not connected, but it's called BTE or Believe, Transform, Evolve. It's a black men's affinity group at the high school. And they're kind of like an umbrella under BSU. There's some like subcommittees there. And they actually spent some time over winter break going around and volunteering, doing some fundraising for, it was single mothers and just helping with the holiday costs. And they actually just did this by going door to door and explaining their kind of cause and hopefully getting some fundraising for that. So that was awesome. I don't know exactly how much they got, but I know it was over $250. So that's awesome. And then the National Honor Society also gathered today. And that was only to hear from our juniors who are running for junior officers for next semester. So it was out of six girls and two of those will be picked ultimately to be the officers for next semester. And that'll just give them more opportunity to actually lead in National Honor Society and help plan because of senior officer positions for next year as well. So they can kind of get a head start with that. And then for sports, wrestling is doing wonderfully, actually. They've won their last tournament and they had two kids who actually won their weight class and then champions of their respective weight classes then. And then girls hockey, won their game last night, which is awesome. But they do have a seven, seven record right now, so seven losses, seven wins. And the boys team lost their game, their last game, but they've got five wins, eight losses. You know, they still have some time. And then the boys swim, they're a close-knit group. They haven't been able to put up any, you know, big numbers yet, but they have fun with it. And that's kind of the same with Alpine and same with Nordic. And Alpine even actually does a secret skier, so they kind of keep the spirit. Even though the numbers are dwindling, they're with Shakopee, so they like to keep a collaborative group. So they're trying to do that with that. And then in other recent updates, just yesterday, we had another collaboration on our profile of a learner and kind of developing that even further, getting it to its final point. And we met virtually as a group where we presented the draft for that. And that was Jo Lynn. It was one of our lovely people who's been helping through from the start. With, I forget the name of the company that actually does it, but she's a part of that and has been kind of pioneering that for us. And she just went through and presented each competency, they're called, and then each of the subcompetencies in there. And during this, people listed. And during this, people listened for areas that wording could be more precise or just sound better to keep our end goal in mind. And it was a collaborative process, just made it very easy to jump in with comments or even questions. And a lot of questions were mostly about defining what each subcompetency actually kind of pertained. So like willing to serve would be, like, what does that actually mean to somebody who's going to be focused in their community? Like, what is that? So a lot of it was about stuff like that or just simple grammatical fixes where they, oh, this would sound better here or whatever. And the next step will be actually presenting it to the school board, which is going to happen at our next meeting at the end of the month. And after that, it's just going to be looking into our curriculum at the high school and just seeing how well those two things go together, like how well our Profile of a Learner already goes with what we have in our curriculum and seeing where we could make changes so that the two are more accentuated. So. And that's all I've got for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I just have one. You mentioned the junior officers. Is this for ROTC or what?
Oh, no, that's actually, it's for National Honor Society.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hume and members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to share some information about something that's probably been on everyone's mind over the last two weeks, winter weather. It is a subject that new superintendents dread because we know that no matter what decision we make, close schools or keep them open, two-hour delay or start on time, some people are going to be unhappy. Eventually, I have learned to accept that and focus on having a good process and a good team so we can make the best decision possible with the information we have. So I wanted to share a little bit about the process, demystify the process because it does really have consequences for members of our community, particularly our students and our staff. It often starts as soon as we hear forecasts for significant snow or extremely cold weather. Members of my leadership team and especially the Director of Operations, Dave Lake, monitor those forecasts. As a major event becomes more likely, I gather and consult with other superintendents in the area. And we begin communicating about it because, as you know, we have many common activities, especially when it comes to athletics, and we're so closely connected by close boundaries. So we kind of review the weather reports that we're hearing, what plans we should consider. And it is a valuable support group for this very consequential decision. But each district has to make its own decision because we have different challenges. As many as you know, Shakopee may be a little flatter, but we have many more hills. For instance, another examples, we don't have many rural roads. So a snow event may not affect us as much as Farmington or New Prague. But icy roads may be more of a challenge because we have more traffic and more intersections in our cities. Next in the process, once we are really closed, probably within a day of the event, the National Weather Service will hold webinars to share the latest predictions. And it's not only superintendent, but it's other government officials. So especially directors of operations, but also our city. As you know, we rely heavily on our city for streets, as well as the county, the county roads also, and also the highways. They share those latest predictions, and they often take place in the afternoon, evening, and even in the early morning. For this last one, I think there was a 4:00 AM one so that we can have the latest information as we're making a decision. They will tell you, and we have seen that, I've seen that during my tenure here, when it comes to air temperature and wind chill, the Weather Service can often be very accurate, even a day in advance. And so I'm comfortable making a decision the night before. But when it comes to snow or freezing rain, there can be big changes over the course of a couple of hours. So we often wait until early morning to make the call. On those mornings such as, was it just yesterday? It sure was.
Yeah, it was.
I meet with my weather team, which includes Dr. Belmont, Executive Director Sovin, Community Education Director Jason Sellers, Director Lake, and Communications Director Aaron Tinklenberg. Typically, we start these Google meets at 4:30 AM. In fact, I have a call with Director Lake usually at 4:00 AM or 4:15 because he has already spoken with our transportation provider, Smithian Sons. So they sometimes start at 3:30 AM in the morning to assess the roads on all three of the cities. They assess those conditions so we can have that information. So we talk about the options and the ramifications of each option. So when the weather is less than ideal, it may seem like an easy option to close schools. Especially now, we have the option of e-learning days. But the truth is, when we close, not everyone celebrates. There's always an issue of children being supervised when parents may not be able to get off at work. Not everyone has that backup, especially, some of you know, when you move, as I did to move, you don't really always have that support network right away when you move from a different state. We also have to remember, for some students, the choice is being at school or being home alone or not having a place where they will have a consistent meal. And we provide those two consistent healthy meals, breakfast as well as lunch. So as much as possible, we want to be open for our students and our staff. And if a family feels it is not safe for their child to go to school, they can absolutely decide to keep them home and notify the school. Because as the superintendent and my leadership team, we always don't know every exact condition where you reside. And so we get a broad brush of the roads, the highways, residential streets. But please know, if you believe it's unsafe because many of our children get a ride, please know you always have that option. So please know, whatever decision I make, some people will be happy, some will be unhappy. But please know, I do take these situations very seriously. And student well-being is always at the heart of our decisions. And so I hope I've demystified it a little bit. I remark to my team, it's, it's just January 12th. And as you know, with two storms ago, we had 45.5 inches of snow and the average is only 51 for the entire winter season. And so, you know, it can snow in April. Prince wrote a song about it. So bear with us, please, and let's just remember to be safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. And as a parent with, who's had kids in the district for a long time, I can confirm with you that there are times where parents are happy with a decision and times where we're not so happy. I've been on both sides of that personally. So not your decisions necessarily, of course, but I've had kids in the district a long time. So thank you for the context. It's really appreciated to have a little more understanding of all the, all the work that goes into making those decisions. And thank you to your staff for the work that they have to do in helping you make those decisions. All right. Next on the agenda, are there any other reports for board members this evening? That's not committees. Okay, if not, we'll move on. We'll move on to the business portion of our meeting. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? And if not, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right. The first item under new business is to approve the additions, deletions, and changes to the 2023-24 course catalog. Dr. Belmont is presenting this item and the next, and the next item.
Good evening, Chair Hume and board members, Dr. Battle. It's my honor to help present changes, additions, and deletions to the 2023-24 Burnsville High School course catalog. I'm fortunate to be joined by two fantastic educators, Saro Abdallah, Culture liaison, and Sarah Noble, our Associate Principal at Burnsville High School, who also serves as our master scheduler. So I think Sarah's going to speak a bit to the overall concept, conceptually to our course catalog. And then Saro's going to share some exciting news about some of the, some of the new, one of the new courses you have in your board packets.
Yeah. Well, thank you. We're excited to bring you this information tonight. There's changes, additions, and deletions, like Dr. Belmont said. And a lot of it, you're going to see a bulk of it, is work that our CTE department did this year in their curriculum revision. So they worked really hard over the last two years to really strengthen pathways. So you'll see a lot of that piece because that was a big chunk of the work this year. Also, some additional additions for our AA, our, our college pathway. So you'll see some courses in there. And you're also going to see something new this year, I believe. We added the next school year because part of our work with Zello and Course Planner is really looking at students looking all the way to 12th grade. So we want them to be able to look forward. So there are some 24, 25 proposals in there also because we really want to make sure that they can see the next step, especially when we're talking pathway work. So I think that's a little different, but I really wanted to get that in there so that you could see beyond just what they're looking at for next year. So, so thank you.
So Mrs. Noble oversees a lot of our pathways, including our CTE as well. So we really are trying to create a culture of inquiry and, and movement for our students that starts even in middle school or perhaps before through our pathways. And then that knowledge of what the system offers. So our, our students are in the throes of this right now where they're supported by adults. And we're coming up on notifying parents as well. So they're having that season of inquiry at kind of a heightened level. So this timing is good and, and then, and then that access, right? So.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Scott Hume and board members and Dr. Battle. We have an exciting new class for Somali students. It's a Somali heritage class. And I want to give you background, how it all came about. We have a parent committee meeting. It's held by Hamdi Daoud every month. And Dr. Battle came and the parents requested that this class would be added to our, you know, curriculum at one of the schools. And we thought the high school would be a perfect place since we have the seal of like multilingual for Somali and Spanish. So we have already saw Spanish heritage class. So then this would be Somali heritage class would, will help students to achieve getting that seal of multilingual. So that is the background. And Dr. Battle talked to Amina, who is our Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment. Then it was turned over to Maria Rego, who's the coordinator for multilingual. And then she reached out to me and Saadi Abdallah to coordinate and plan out. And I think we are on a schedule for next year.
Thank you. Saro, right, like, we have so many students that are beyond familiar with a language in addition to English. So world language is not limited, mastery of world language is not limited to something that you have little to no familiarity with. So I just thanks Saro and Sarah for making this happen. And it is exciting news that the students can look at this as one of their course offering. And, and we're one of the first districts to, to codify this and, and make it part of our course catalog offerings. So send it back to you, Director Hume.
Thank you very much.
Chair Hume and consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Werb. Is there any discussion? Director Alt?
Thank you, Chair Hume. Thank you all. Always appreciate getting to see the course catalog. And just anecdotally, I'm aware of some of the changes with getting students signed up for next year that are new this year through my own students' experience. And I just think it's awesome because the sooner we can help our students make those decisions and get those logged in, then August gets to be a little easier, I, I imagine, and we all hope. I do have a couple of questions. So now the automotive classes that are being added, those are being funded through the manufacturing grant?
The, I can answer that. So they're, they're really being adjusted. The, the course names have changed. A lot of what will be offered within that will be the same. The training behind and getting our program certified is through the, the grant.
Gotcha. And so, thank you for that. Because that brings me to my next question, which is, what is the level of certifications that student, students would graduate with? What, what does that mean for them?
Okay, I'm going to do my best. I've learned a lot about automotive in the last few years. So what I've learned is, and we've had some, I'll call them committee meetings, but we've had, been able to have our, our industry partners in and also our secondary partners. So let's see, DCTC is a big one, and they've been able to meet with us. This is typical, the next steps of, of this programming is what kids would typically do at DCTC or would do in a post-secondary institution. So it's leading them into that. We also have our partners, Walzer and other great car companies that come to our meetings and talk to us. And they're also indicating that this is what they want to hire our kids with. This is really leading into industry standards. So our courses before were great and they were teaching the skills, but this is aligning them with what we believe will be industry standards to really support our kids to instantly be able to get jobs and, and then, or go to that post-secondary, probably work at the same time, but postsecondarily be able to go right into the pathway using very similar structure as far as how they're being educated.
So kind of similar to the CIS classes where we're helping students in advance, saving families money?
Yes, yes. Yep.
And then, curious about the internship classes and just wondering how those works, how those, those internship classes work following enrollment?
How they're.
What it looks like for the student after they enroll in the class?
Sure, sure. And the group is, is still working on it. That is still a bit of a work in progress because each area is going to be a little different on how that looks. We've done some internship pieces. Unfortunately, they were targeted over COVID and it was really hard to get our kids in. So there's going to be some different ways. But each group within CTE, you know, business and foods and automotive, everybody really indicated they wanted an internship. They wanted to have a capstone portion. And a lot of them are still looking through what that's going to look like. And I think it's going to be very individualized. And so the support will look like, we really want to make sure that kids have the opportunity and the time during the day. So it may be able to, let them be able to leave a little earlier or to be able to go to that work and be supported. It could mean that that individual student will need more support to get to the job piece. So there might be the job skills being able to be worked on. Every group's very individual right now and working through it. So that is still part of their curriculum work in progress. But it was very important for each group to see that capstone of an internship. So.
And with each internship, are you envisioning there would be some sort of advisor that the students would be checking in with?
Yes, yes. Yep, so a member of that CTE group would be, whether it would be an independent, more of an independent internship or if they needed that hands-on support to get there, it would be someone from that area.
Awesome. And just a comment, this is, it's just really wonderful to see the internships in our course catalog because I remember back in, I think it was 2014 or 2015, we had a group that was created called the Burnsville Promise. And this was one of the, the internships came out in conversations. It was a group of, you know, representatives from schools, business, the chamber, nonprofits, higher ed. And of course, business was really interested in the internships. And at the time, we needed to figure out how that would work. And, you know, there were safety and security issues for the students. So this is really just, it's music to my ears to, to hear that it's, that it's finally coming to fruition for our students.
I'll make sure they hear that. And they'll keep working on what that looks like individually. So thank you.
And then one last question. Maybe it's more of a comment. So looking at the classes that are being added and appreciating the importance for students to see classes out two years. As a board member, I see that and I think about budget and finance and what is that going to cost? And we haven't yet gotten there. So, you know, looking at, you know, we're looking at adding, let's see, deleting nine classes, adding 24 and 23. you know, we're looking at adding, let's see, deleting nine classes, adding 24 and 23, 24, and adding nine more, 24, 25. So our enrollment is flat. And the balance of adds and deletes have me concerned, even understanding that, you know, we have a different, we have a, we know the position of the governor and the legislature on education. They've, they've made it very clear what they want to do with education. But like Director Chester, I'm very cautious and hesitant in certain areas. So I guess, is it cart before the horse to be, to be adding in those classes before we even know what the budget's going to be?
Well, I can't, like, Associate Principal Noble can tell you better than me that, like, master scheduling is a 12-month or 13-month. So we are constantly looking at student interest and need, resources, and then how to melt those two. So what appears as additions is actually calibration, because there's a vision towards a course sequence that we want to spark that interest. And then, and then those additions will ultimately lead to calibration within our available resources. So we have what we have for student numbers, right? And so we have that information. And then we have our staffing availability based on those, those figures, as well as other budgetary considerations. And then we run courses accordingly. But I think, so Ms. Noble might be able to add, but my interpretation of that vision is to get kids forward thinking and planning, and also to kind of spark some of that interest so that when it comes time to those decisions, those decisions, that we can have kids in the most appropriate courses.
I just want to make a comment about that. Another analogy, because student demand drives that schedule. So if you don't have the demand, we have a certain number to have to be in a course, you won't offer the course, unfortunately. And it's similar to the way Minnesota State High School League. Who would have thought boys volleyball would be a sport with so many interests? So we have to find a way. And as you know, numbers are dwindling in other sports, the cooperative. So we look at the resources the board will approve, and we have to work within that. So I hear your concern, but that is something that we do look at. We have to go with student interest. And unfortunately, sometimes when there's low interest, we don't offer the course. And student knows that perspective because we have to stay within. So.
And yeah, no problem. And I guess my other, you know, the other piece that I would add to that is, while I love CIS classes and, and, you know, the, the INVER classes that are being added, those do put a strain on the system because they do have a class limit. And, you know, if our class average is at 30, and CIS has a maximum of, what, 22, 24, maybe, those other, you know, eight, six to eight students have to be placed somewhere else. So, you know, again, there's that class size consideration. And I guess, I, I'm just bringing that up because I don't want to find that our hands are tied. And I want to make sure that I know, Dr. Battle, you and your team will work within the budget and work within the resources. But those are just the things that I'm worried about. So thank you, Chair Hume.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Ava?
Yeah, I, I guess I thought that the word calibrating was great to explain that. And I think too, with the middle schoolers, are they involved in any of that? Because I think they were really interested when Link Crew had went and spoke to them. I think it was like last month.
Yep.
We went and just kind of answered questions, kind of, you know, shared a little bit about the pathways, if we had been involved in any, and to share about our schedules. But I feel like some interest level could be piqued there, too, if we're starting earlier. And in that way, if they're already giving, okay, a look ahead, then they should actually be like, looking ahead for their high school, too, not just kids in high school looking ahead for senior year. Because I think that, like, they, a lot of kids in middle school are more excited about high school than a lot of high schoolers are excited about high school. So I think that might be a good spot to like really start to. Because I mean, they were asking me all sorts of questions, even about like the tech annex, which I, I had like a, I had woodworking in there, so I could tell them a little bit about that. But other than, I think a lot of those kids were just really excited about seeing the various classes. So I think pushing the course catalog a lot in the middle schools and just like making sure that the kids are very aware of the class options that they have. Because I think that's a lot of the time what causes like the whole not having enough numbers. Like, I'm currently in a class that didn't exist for the last three years because just until now, there wasn't enough kids who wanted to take it. So I think like making sure that people are actually aware of all the opportunities and classes that the high school offers is like step one. Because that, I think, will help combat the issue that you're thinking of and at least make kids do things that they're interested in. So.
And thanks to you and the Link Crew leaders for doing that work, right? I mean, our eighth graders tend to listen to our Link Crew leaders more than us, right? When it comes to that course experience and what the, the school offers. So we deploy them, they voluntarily deploy down to eighth grade to help our, inspire them.
Or course registration.
Through course.
As they're rising to ninth grade.
Yes. So they engage in that course planning. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Battle. As they're rising towards ninth grade, we want that conversation starting, I think it was as early as November.
Yeah. 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 So they got to experience the same course planner that the high school kids did. So they were able to see that. But I think, I agree, it's, it's you and the Link Crew, Link Crew leaders going that really starts that spark. So thank you.
It's fun. So if they seem to enjoy it, it makes everybody else, you know, it's fun to miss a few hours of school if you're doing something that other people seem to be enjoying too. So.
Good.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I'll just add, I think every time I read course descriptions or opportunities we have at our, our high school, how much, I will never say that I want to go back to high school, but, but I'm envious of our high school students and the amazing opportunities that we're able to offer them. So thank you for all the work that goes into creating this, this course catalog. Given that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And then I think the next item on the agenda is to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Regulation 413, Administrative Regulation for Supporting Transgender and Gender Expansive Students. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a move by Director Alt? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Is there any discussion?
Oh, do we want?
Oh, sorry. I apologize. First meeting. Give me a little slack.
You're doing great.
Great job.
Dr. Belmont, would you care to present?
Thank you, Chair Hume. You're doing a great job in your.
Even though we have a first and a second, you just go.
I will have the discussion.
So, so thank you. And I am here presenting to you changes on a first reading basis to Regulation 413R, Administrative Regulation for Supporting Transgender and Gender Expansive Students. These revisions seek to clarify previously adopted language, to limit unnecessary duplications, and to ensure the language, to ensure that the, the language clearly labels the associated requirements and state statute. So I'll walk you through some of those. Direct you to Section 2, Privacy, and we added the term confidentiality. And Section 3, Official School Records, were both revised to further clarify language around privacy expectations as connected to the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA, and the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act. And I'll just read to you the revised section, informational, information related to a student's transgender and gender expansive status as private data under the Minnesota Government Data Privacy Practices Act and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA. Therefore, there are limitations on which, on when such data may be shared. To ensure the privacy rights of students, district personnel shall not disclose information that reveals a student's transgender or gender expansive stance to others unless by written consent of a parent, legal guardian, or student, the information is needed by other school personnel within the district who have a legitimate educational interest in the information in order to perform their duties or provide services to the student, the person is a parent or legal guardian of the student, or a federal or state law compels disclosure, for example, health emergency, a court order, or a subpoena. Parent guardians have full access to information regarding their children, except in very limited circumstances where a determination has been made that the access is not in the best interest of the child, for example, to protect from physical or emotional harm. Parents' guardians may not be denied access to any existing educational records unless the student is enrolled full-time in a post-secondary institution or has attained the age of 18. In some cases, with the consent of the students and parents and guardians, district staff will develop a plan to inform and educate the student's peers and/or engage external resources to assist in the support of students dealing with transgender or gender expansive issues. The new section in Official School Records, Section 3, the new language states, "In situations where school district staff or administrators are required by law to use or report a transgender or gender expansive student's legal name or gender, such as for purposes of standardized testing, school staff and administrators shall adopt practices intended to minimize the likelihood of inadvertent disclosure of confidential or private information relating to a student's gender identity or gender expression to parties lacking a legitimate educational interest in that information." Again, Sections 2 and 3, we're really seeking to make sure we are clarifying our language as it relates to the FERPA and Minnesota Government Data Private Practices Act. Section 4, Student Names and Pronouns and Markers, that has been revised to reflect current case law as well as FERPA and the MGDPA. It reads that the student may request a name or pronoun change in which the staff will receive this request and engage the parent in accordance with FERPA and the Minnesota Data Privacy Practice Act. Section 8, so we'll move forward to Section 8, School Trips. This language shares that we apply our standard field trip policies to ensure that we are honoring the federal Title IX law and the Equal Protections Clause. We revise the paragraph on school trips to read as follows. "All students shall be permitted to participate in all school trips in a manner that corresponds with their gender identity or in a manner that allows the student to feel the safest, included, and most comfortable. In planning school trips, staff is expected to assess the student's need in collaboration with the student and/or the student's parents' guardians." All right. We're, we're almost there, everyone. The, I refer you to Section 11, Staff Training and Compliance. We revise this language to clarify our staff role in the implementation of this regulation to be consistent with our school district policy. We remove duplications in other policy, and the revised section reads, "All district staff shall be informed of the existence of this regulation. The district will, at intervals determined by the district, provide training on and how to support transgender or gender expansive students." Finally, Section 12, Discrimination, Harassment, and Bullying. We remove potentially confusing or duplicate language around the connections of this regulation to various other policies. The revised section reads, "Complaints alleging misconduct based on a student's actual or perceived transgender status or gender nonconformity shall be investigated and addressed pursuant to the applicable school district policy." Thank you. And in summary, I'll send it back to you, I'm Chair Hume, and ask that board consider these changes on a first reading basis to Regulation 413.
Thank you very much, Dr. Belmont. I believe we already have a motion and a second. Is there, is there any discussion or any questions for Dr. Belmont? I just want to say thank you to you and to Dr. Battle and your staff for the work that went into the changes and revisions and clarifications. I hope that this, these changes will make it easier for our families, our staff, and most importantly, our students to understand our policies and our processes and create the safest, most welcoming environment for all of our students. So thank you for all that work.
Thank you.
All right. Having said that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And this concludes our meeting. The meeting is adjourned at 7:33 PM. Thank you very much, Tony.